Hey, how we doing?
Good evening. April 1st, 2025, City Council Meeting at 6:30 PM. We'll start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction to lead us to be strong and unified, and we continue the legacy of our founders. May you be grateful to this day that we took decisions which be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen. To the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Chow? Counselor Dakota? Counselor Getchea? Counselor Janess? Counselor Mercia? Counselor Noon? Counselor Robinson? Mayor Ruck? Counselor Scott? Counselor Yem? Counselor Belanger?
Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Raymond E. Lalasha. He was the loving husband of the late Jeannie Dupont Lalasha, with whom he celebrated 63 years of marriage. Ray was born and raised in Lowell and attended St. Peter's School and Lowell High School, class of 1948. In his younger days, Ray worked at Cherry and Webbs in downtown Lowell until taking a job for the Courier Citizens Corps, where he worked for over 25 years. In the fall of 1980, Ray began working at UMass Lowell in the Financial Aid Office. He enjoyed assisting students through the application process and would often speak at seminars for incoming students and their parents. He held this position until his retirement in 1996 and later returned to work part-time at UMass Lowell's Financial Aid Office again from 1997 until 2006. Ray was a devout Catholic, and he was a communion to the Sacred Heart Church and Holy Family Parish. He served the parish as an Asha, volunteered at Weekly Bingo, and was a member of the Holy Name Society. He spent many Thanksgivings and Christmases on the holidays alongside his brother, State Rep. Eddie Lalasha, delivering meals to those who would otherwise go without. Ray is survived by his children, Daniel Lalasha, Joyce Leahy, Anne Marie Rindo, and Patricia De McAllis, his nine grandchildren, many nieces and nephews. He was the brother of the late Thomas Lalasha and the late Edward Lalasha State Rep. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and his many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Raymond A. Barassa. Ray attended Lowell schools, where he met the love of his life in high school sweetheart, Carmen Moran. Their love story began in their youth and flourished throughout a beautiful marriage, which began in 1960. Ray was a proud veteran, honorably serving his country in the United States Air Force. He then went on to work for the city of Lowell for 32 years, where he worked his way up from the ground level to a foreman position. Throughout his career, Raymond was dedicated to his work, but his true passion was always his family. As a father of eight, Ray was a hard-working man, taking on several jobs to ensure that his family had everything they needed. His devotion to his wife, children, and grandchildren was unwavering. He was a cherished Pepe to his 14 grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren, and will be missed dearly. In addition to his wife Carmen, Ray is survived by his eight daughters, Janine Mello, Deborah Barassa, Susan Parquet, Joanne Barassa, Michelle Barassa, Colette Edmonds, Renee Barassa, and Danielle Barassa. Our condolences to his family, relatives, and his many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to all the people who passed on since our last City Council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor. Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and a dock in chamber for our friend Catherine Kitty Dixon-Ducakis, wife of former governor of Massachusetts and former president, show candidate Michael Ducakis, who passed away March 21st, 2025, at her home in Brookline, Massachusetts. She was 88 years old. Kitty Ducakis openly shared her struggles with addiction to diet pills and alcohol, even as her husband ran for President of the United States in 1988. This frankness led her to become an author, activist, who focused on discussing addictions, it causes, and how to overcome it. Proud of her Jewish heritage, she was passionate about raising awareness of the Holocaust. She was appointed by multiple U.S. Presidents to serve on the National Holocaust Commissions. She was a founding member of the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum. She pushes to get the lessons of Holocaust taught in public school. During her husband's second term, Kitty Ducakis served as a co-chair of the Massachusetts Governor Advisory Committee on Homeless, where she worked on plan to share shelter costs with charities within the state. Kitty Ducakis was also interested in helping Cambodian, Laotians, and Vietnamese refugees, and she served on a board of Refugees Policy Group. In early 1980, she established a task force on Cambodian children as an advocate for Cambodian refugees. Miss Kitty Ducakis visited refugee camp in Thailand in 1985 and helped bring a young refugee child, Pichu, who is living in Lowell currently, to Massachusetts to reunite it with his sister. Kitty Ducakis is survived by her husband of 63 years, Michael S. Ducakis, son John Ducakis, daughters Andrea, Cara Ducakis, grandchildren Ally Ducakis, Peter Ducakis, Sophia Ducakis, Alana Ducakis, Nico Hereford, Olivia Oneck, and Nora Oneck, sons-in-law, John Hereford, and David Oneck, nephew Rob and Mike Shane, niece Betsy Barry. Kitty was preceded in death by her granddaughter, Joby Hereford. A memorial service will be held at 2:00 PM on May 11, 2025, in the Roberts Dobbs Auditorium at Brookline High School. May her soul rest in peace.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, please dock in chamber. May they all rest in peace. Section 2, Mayor's Business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation, motion accepted petition filed by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Chow, also favors AI, opposed motion passes. Also, April is being recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is a response to a motion that was made by Counsel Noon and passed unanimously by a City Council a couple of weeks ago. He had to read the proclamation this evening. Counsel Noon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the honor to read the proclamations. This proclamation read as follow. Whereas the sexual assault awareness month is a pervasive and devastating crime that affect individual, families, and community across the nation. And whereas raising awareness about sexual assault is crucial to preventing this crime, supporting survivor, and holding offender accountable. And whereas fostering a culture of respect, consent, and standbider intervention is essential to creating safe and supportive environment for all individual. Whereas it is important to recognize the courage and resilience of survivor of sexual assault and to provide them with access to resource and support they needed to heal and recover. Now, thereby, I, Mr. Noon, on behalf of Mayor Daniel Ruck and all my fellow Counselors, do hereby proclaim April as a Sexual Assault Awareness Month and call upon all individual organization and community to join in the mission to end sexual violence through prevention, support survival, and awareness, two-word ending described. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. We want to say, Clerk, Section 3, 3.1, Mayor's Technology and Utilities Subcommittee, March 25th, City Council Regular Meeting, March 25th, for acceptance, motion accepted petition filed by Counsel Dakota, seconded by Counsel Getchea, also favors AI, opposed motion passes. Section 4, Public Carrying, is not yet 7:00 PM, and move on to the City Council's motions. Section 5, 5.1, Counselors Janess and Counsel Robinson, request City Manager to provide quarterly summary updates to the City Council from data within the 311 system to give information to the Council about what kinds of issues are being reported and how they are being addressed, no second needed. Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that 311 is up and live, I think it's a good idea for this body to just remain informed as we go down the path here, how the system is being used by the public, what kinds of issues are being reported, what resolutions we're seeing, just to help guide our priorities here on the board. I think it makes sense for us to get regular updates from that data. Thank you.
So you're using on social media today, Counselor. Nice job. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I agree with my colleague on this. I'd like to see part of those reports, if we could. Could we start getting some of the data as far as what's the average response to some of these categories that we're seeing a high frequency in? I think that'll help us to dial it down if we can get average response times. Thank you.
Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.2, Counsel Robinson, request City Manager to have the Department of Public property provide information on whether erosion control methods should be in place at the Centerville Apple Orchard Project and who is enforcing these requirements, seconded by Counsel Yem, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. It's been brought to my attention, I've been by this project probably about six times. And, I mean, we're talking six, seven acres that's completely cleared, and it's a significant pitch over in that area. As you recall, I believe it was last year, we had DPW out at the reservoir mitigating the erosion control on the edge of the reservoir with trap rock, because when we got heavy rains, we saw erosion. This is a lot steeper, and it's on a location, especially on Reservoir Street, that side. Any project this size, I believe, is governed by the state and does require at minimum, like, silt socks or silt screens, and there's none of that around this project. So I don't know if that's something we enforce internally, or if it's something that the state would be enforcing, but I noticed there are no mitigation efforts. Here we are in spring, I'm sure we'll begin some heavy rains coming soon. Thank you.
Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.3, Counsel Robinson, request City Manager to have the Department of Public property explore putting the worst sections of Bay and Barker Street on localized paving list for FY '24, sorry, '25 and '26, seconded by Counsel Mercia, Counsel Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.4, Counsel Getchea, request City Manager looking at benefits of outsourcing irrigation startup and shutdown due to staffing levels, seconded by Counsel Janess, Counsel Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. If we're going to manage a golden, we're down to two plumbers, is that where we're at right now? Two, and I just think with all the municipal buildings and everything we're out there, the easiest thing to do is help them with some services, because we obviously have it in the budget, because we're not funding the other ones right now, so why not just transfer that over and have someone come in, do the irrigation, lessen the load for them so that they can get in the other areas? I think that would probably be in the best interest of everybody, and then have them blow it out when it gets to fall. Thank you.
Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good motion. My research tells me too that we are understaffed in that department, so there's two ways to go, either we create a new position or we outsource it. So that being said, I think it's a motion that's well worth exploring, and I look forward to the response. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to add, as far as adding a position, we do have existing positions, whether they're vacant or not. Irrigation Specialist is added to some of our plumber titles, they might be vacant right now, but to create an irrigation specialist alone, it's something that's already tied to some of our plumbers. Thank you.
Counsel Getchea?
I do understand what Counsel Robinson's saying, but when we're this short-staffed, I think that just makes sense to protect those investments we have in everywhere, as I'm sure Counsel Robinson knows too. So it's just to try to give them some help, get them away from the irrigation, and just put them into the plumbing until we get full staffed, and then go back to the regular way we did things. Thank you.
Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.5, Counsel Getchea, request City Manager to provide City Council with all open positions and how long they have been vacant, seconded by Counsel Noon, Counsel Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. It's that time of year again when we go into budget, and we're just looking to see, are these positions needed? How long have they been vacant? And should we look at some cutbacks if we get into the budget time, where they're vacant? Thank you.
Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.6, Counsel Belanger, request City Manager to have the Department of Public property provide an update and timelines on the upcoming Andover Street project, seconded by Counsel Noon, Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I have constituents that are calling and, you know, would like an update as to Andover Street. It seemed like last fall, we were under the gun to come up with a decision by MassDOT on short order to which path we're going to go, but it seems like things have, I don't know if things have stalled, but I haven't heard much. You know, the condition of Andover Street is probably the worst I've seen it. I know it's been a terrible winter, we've already patched over 600 potholes to date with more to go. I know I submitted more the other day, but the condition of Andover Street is really, really, it's in pretty tough shape. I didn't know it was capable of getting this many potholes, if you want the truth. So looking forward to an update and how soon we're going to get going there. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the Council. Counsel, that is something that we had just discussed recently, I will give you an upcoming update, but as you know, we're, many of us here, actually, we're at the meeting over in the, over in the fall. So we will be looking towards spending that money on a concrete, keeping it concrete. I think that's what, one of the things everybody wants to know. And then we're going to look for a 10-year plan in the future to see what can happen out there. So first and foremost, I'll get you the dates and the times, but as far as 311 has been working, I think 311 has been working great. We have over 1,000 requests right now, and I know that our folks have been working extremely hard. So if we can kind of keep plugging 311, that'd be a good piece. But we'll get you a date, time, et cetera. And then, of course, we'll be looking for some feedback on the tip plan, the transportation improvement plan.
Yes, very important.
Out there.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And in the interim, it says ACM, Shama Shao is doing a tremendous job on, I'm keeping him busy as all my colleagues are on the potholes. So I look forward to that update very, with great anticipation, Mr. Manager, as well as my constituents. Thank you.
Counsel Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I recollect correctly, City Manager, at that meeting at the Riley, did we, or since then, have we made a decision that it is going to be concrete and not asphalt? Or, because I don't think there was a definitive yes or no on that.
Mr. Manager?
Currently, right now, MassDOT has given us $4 million. MassDOT has made it pretty clear that, what they want, but we're never going to get that done for the $4 million. So I think that the prudent thing right now is to fix what we can out in that area with concrete, and then look for a tip plan, transportation improvement plan, over the next X years. It's typically five to 10. I probably would hesitate to say it's not five, but it's not 10, it's someplace in that area. So that's something that would probably go back to the neighborhood. Many of the, actually, Counsel Dakota, you were there as well. There were a lot of people with some concerns with crossings and things of that nature. I think it's going to require a little bit more time for us to plan, but for now, I think we're going to take the money that we can get, and I believe that Liz Altman was the one that put that together to make sure that concrete is staying there for this time, for the time being, and we can have the discussion about what it's going to look like in the future.
Appreciate the answer. Thank you. When that's ready to go, Mr. Manager, we can request Counsel Janess bring that to NEMCOG. They take care of a lot of the tip stuff out there, so. Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.7, motion by Counsel Scott, myself, request City Manager to send a letter to the Joint Committee on Education with copies to our state delegation in support of the City Council's endorsement of the following bills, Senate 447, Senate 456, House 570, House 556, and House 572, no second needed. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All five of these bills were brought to our attention by students that had reached out, asking us to support them. I did a little research on them. The main things that they kind of point out in the bills is that there's minimum cost to teaching CPR in school with little impact to the classroom. Bystander CPR can double or triple the chance of survival in cardiac arrest cases, and that 41 states already have mandates for CPR education in their classrooms. Massachusetts is behind in adopting. I did reach out to Superintendent Skinner, just to make sure that he was okay with this, you know, our support of this. I know there's a lot of demands for curriculum for the teachers, and he had no concerns at all about it. He did support this, so I would ask us to also support this and send a letter to the Joint Education Committee. Thank you.
Now, just add, at the next school committee, I'll bring the same motion from that body. Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.8, a motion by myself and Counsel Mercia to request the City Manager to work at the Department of Public property to provide the Council with a report on feasibility and process required to raise the income threshold for senior property tax exemptions, no second needed. Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for allowing me to join you on this very special motion. It's near and dear to my heart, not that I'm taking it, I'm not, but, because my house is in a different situation. I wanted to bring this request forward to the City Manager because senior property tax exemptions are important for reducing the financial burden of our most vulnerable older homeowners. However, as inflation and living costs rise, income thresholds for these exemptions have become outdated, limiting the number of eligible seniors. After doing some research and talking to our assessors' office and Mr. Baldwin, along with you, Mr. Mayor, it has become outdated, and we realize that there is a problem. After doing some research and talking to these people, along with the finance team, they have begun the process of examining the feasibility of increasing income thresholds. I want the City Council to go on record in support of such an initiative, and in doing so, some research with the assessors and Mr. Baldwin, I learned that the, along with our mayor, Danny Ruck, we learned that our current state law, which governs the income limits in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41(c), it allows for the highest income and asset thresholds, which are currently at the income 27,540 if single, or 31,780 if married. The assessment department receives annually reports from the Department of Revenue that outlines exclusion items for consideration. Now, assets, 55,958 if single, are 61,176 if married. For assets, the assessors do not include the value of the residence. While these limitations are adequate to protect the lowest income bracket in the city, I know, along with our mayor, that these limits have not kept up with inflation, and that other retired families are struggling to keep up with inflation and need relief. We need to do more, Mr. Manager, through you, to the City Manager, this I'm addressing to you, and I'm asking you to work your magic, because I know you have it, to find ways and means to protect my constituents and all of our City Council constituents who fall into this category. I know that there is an account called the overlay, you're familiar with that, of course, which is budgeted every year by our finance team to account for these kinds of exemptions and abatements, and that the annual overlay is not always totally depleted. Am I right so far? Meaning that there might be room to increase the exemption in a way that doesn't impact the other taxpayers of Lowell negatively. However, it is my understanding that a change of this nature may require special legislation, and I know, Mr. Manager, that you have friends still in Boston who might be able to help us, along with our State House delegation, to pass a law for Lowell to make some changes to protect our elderly. Therefore, I'm asking for a report from your finance team on what steps might be necessary to accomplish this initiative. So this is, I didn't want to spring it on you, but this is very important to the seniors. Sometimes we have inflation, but we don't have an equal justification with an abatement that equals the inflation that took place. So that's the gist of our motion. If you want to add to it, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know much I can add. Counsel, that was an excellent explanation of the motion, just to second what you said about the thresholds are very low at this point in time, and, you know, 27,031, and then 15,61, it really, it really x's out most all of our seniors that probably need a break. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you for joining this.
Counsel Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an excellent motion. I do have a question, I guess, just the 27,5 and the 31, so that means we're not at the allowed amount right now at the current time? Is that correct? So we are able to move forward with having that discussion about increasing that now? Or?
Mr. Manager? Or Mr. CFO? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three to the Council. Counselors, we could come back with a report and then send a special legislation to the legislature to ask for that increase.
Oh, you have to ask them for that? Okay.
We're just talking, I was just talking with the CFO. We could tailor it just for the city of Lowell, allow them to change it, because maybe other cities and towns would want to participate in it. So we'd keep it probably flexible. We'd talk to the city solicitor about it, and it would be at the, you know, the decision of the Council if they wanted to leave it as flexible as possible.
There's no adjustment for, like, inflation, like, when they, there's just a flat amount, and it has to be revisited for them to increase it? I mean, it seems like there should be some type of adjustment for the seniors built into it.
From what I understand, Mr. Mayor, it was increased in 2001. Is that 24 years ago? Inflation went up quite a bit in 24 years, but our seniors and people are struggling need to.
You probably voted to approve that at the time, Counsel.
Perhaps you could ask.
It's a joy, yeah.
Yeah, perhaps you could ask that there is an inflationary method put into it.
Mr. Manager, hear that part about it, about the inflation, inflation, inflation part of it? Add that into our letter, maybe?
Thank you.
Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend my colleagues, this is a very thoughtful joint motion by my colleagues, and one that I certainly hear very much of in my district from elderly residents who are on fixed income, that doesn't necessarily go up, if so, very, very small percentage. But, you know, the issue we have here is, you know, taxes may go up year to year on three, four, or five percent basis. However, on top of that, assessed value's been going up consistently too. So that compounds the increase, which is more than just a few percent. Although people are gaining city residents' property values in an upward trajectory, which is a good thing, and equity is being built, but that doesn't put money in your pocket to buy groceries necessarily. So I think it's one certainly that we can task the manager with to explore and see what kind of relief we can give to our seniors who deserve it, many of which have been lifelong residents here in the city. You know, Counsel Mercy has been a fierce advocate for them over the years, and I'm with, I'm with my colleagues on this one. And to offset this, if we give tax breaks to seniors, that's fine, so let's continue to work on new tax growth like we did last Tuesday to make up for it, right? That's my message to my colleagues, let's focus on new buildings, new growth, to help out seniors. Sounds like a good deal to me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Also favors AI, opposed motion passes, 5.9, a motion by myself, request City Manager to negotiate a contract with the city auditor for consideration and approval by the City Council to continue her term, which expired in 2024, seconded by Counsel Noon, so motion speaks for itself. Counsel Getchea, go ahead.
My question is, isn't this a City Council function? It should be at the Personnel Subcommittee? Shouldn't they be negotiating this back and forth? The employee is one of the City Councils, right?
Can we make a change a few years ago, Mr. CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you're alluding to maybe five or six years ago, the Council did give administrative oversight of the auditor to the City Manager due to some personnel issues at the time, not with... issues at the time, not with Ms. Oaks. But the motion would delegate the negotiation to the manager. It would still come back to the appropriating authority, the appointing authority, rather, for approval.
Mr. Mayor, that isn't the, that isn't totally accurate. I believe that contract negotiations still stayed. I believe it was just day-to-day stuff while in the building. The council couldn't oversee that position. So I believe back then that was the reason. It wasn't for contract negotiations, for personnel. But why do we evaluate that position, then?
The position doesn't work for us.
Right, exactly.
Years ago, we had this similar issue. We've ordered to delegate a certain part of it to the manager's office, and, you know, that's where we.
No, and I agree with you. A certain part.
Because his contract ends, I thought the best way to do it was to have the manager's team negotiate it, and we come back to us, and we can change it, we can take a look at it. But I figured, you know, let them go through the process of the other auditors around the area and similar sizes of cities and things like that.
I still believe that this should go to the personnel subcommittee, and it should be negotiated that way. Thank you.
We'll call Madam Court.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
No.
Council Getchea?
No.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
No.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
AP 7 o'clock, returns of public hearings. For general public hearings, 4.1, ordinance to amend the fee schedule, body art license. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, city of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 150 thereof entitled fees by amending certain sections. What's that to mean? By all in favor? In favor, in favor. The portion of meeting is closed. Oh, in opposition? Opposition, opposition. The portion of meeting is closed. The motion adopted by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Yem. We'll call Madam Court.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Six, we wish for city manager motion responses, 6.1A, ideal tape. Council Dakota?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, ask the assistant city clerk to table us to next week. Looking for a little more information and working with Ms. Golden.
Voice response B, exit interview. Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you to manager Golden, a couple of questions. What happened to the data from June of? How are you? Good. What happened to the data from October 22nd to June, October of '22 to June of 2023?
Good evening, mayor, to the council. I don't see that in my records. So the information I was able to compile was from the actual exit interviews that I could physically find.
So do we, and the current ones that you could find from June of '23 to February of 2025, do we actually physically ask them to come in and do a personal interview, or are we just emailing something out and saying, read this and respond and come back to us?
My procedure has been to email it out. Sometimes the person's in front of us, we can actually ask them to fill it out, and also give them the opportunity, if they want to tell us something, we would be available for that.
So all of them come in and they're interviewed, or you just email them out and you respond after they're?
It varies. So depending on the situation of how they're separating from the city, the conversations are different. If you're retiring, if you're a forced separation, or you found something, other place to go, the conversations are slightly different.
I mean, I understand the ones that are forced separation aren't going to give a good one, but I just think that it's imperative that we sit down, whether it doesn't have to be you, but it should be a departmental manager, department head sits down with someone and says, okay, what's the reasoning so that if there are qualifiers that can be changed, that we can look at? Because some of the things in here are pretty negative when you look at the low percentages on some of it, that maybe we could do better on. And if we didn't ask for this motion, I don't know that we, as a council, even understand why people are leaving. And 70 seems like a lot of people when you look at it, because it says that you had about 50% respond, which was 35. So it seems like it's a high turnover. And, but in one case, it says the work environment's good and the pay's decent. So I don't understand how there's a high turnover when people are just trying to.
Yes, again, so the enthusiasm for filling out these forms differ between the individuals. Some want to share, some don't. Some are all happy, and it's great, and some are quite negative. So we have to analyze that information as we get it.
I just think it's not personable when you just send out an email to somebody and say, fill it out, that's all. That's just my opinion. When I left other places, they actually sat with you and said, okay, where are we? Where do we go from there? But thank you for your time. And I think you're probably the first one who's actually done this. I want to, that's why you can't find that data. So I congratulate you on that. At least we're moving in the right direction.
Voice response C, Little House, Council Scott.
Thank you for the update. That's all. Thank you.
Voice response D, LTLC relocation, Council Belanger.
Thank you to the manager and his administration for their response, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Voice response E, 437 Vonnam Ave, Council Getchea.
Thank you.
Voice response F, Shed Park. I don't have who filed that one. Who's that belong to? Council Belanger?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as we enter baseball Little League season, you know, much of the staff and volunteers there, we're looking for an update. As to the ongoing between lower and upper field there on Shed Park, it's a very utilized field that hosts state championships. As to the concession stands and some restrooms, which would be greatly appreciated, I often hear from the parents that they're tired of going to Wendy's to use the facilities. But, and I want to thank DPD Director Giovanni Rose by us for a tremendous, tremendous motion response. But, well, I can see why, you know, things, you know, we've taken a phased approach, if you will, on this. So, Mr. Mayor, through you to DPD Director. Giovanni, are these numbers correct? 750 square feet this facility to the tune of $900,000?
Unfortunately, yes. That is correct.
If I was to build a $900,000 home, I'm probably going to get 4,000, 5,000 square feet, not 750. I mean, I understand the placement of this. It's the length of a football field to bring the utilities to it, meaning water, correct? And that's been a large expense, a large expenditure on this?
The sewer line added a significant expense, given the location of where we were pulling it through from where we were going to be tapping into on Park Ave East, I think is the name of the road. And so we had to bring it. It essentially was connecting a little bit past the entry for Lowell Cemetery, up the street, and then across, like, basically two fields.
Yeah. We're talking about the length of a football field practically here. All right, I understand that. So do we have all you told? Do we have electric and water and sewer there? Or will we in the coming days, weeks?
So as of today, the location had existing electrical and had existing water. And so we had to pull a new sewer line and install a pump at the location. That's all been completed to date. And so the utilities that we need to have a functioning concession and restroom building are now pulled to the site.
All right. Well, that is great news. Okay, the foundation, I understand, is just a couple of weeks away. We're just waiting for weather, basically, right?
Correct, yes. So we are getting a foundation essentially poured with the utilities pulled and stubbed at the location. And so we just need it to warm up and stay consistently warm enough for that war to occur. But that's all, like, we have a purchase order executed. We have people under contract. We're just waiting on the weather.
Excellent. Another giant step. Thank you. And so one would assume that once the foundation goes in, we're going to start building right away, but that's not the case here. Please elaborate.
Yeah, unfortunately, we, we don't have money yet for the full final phase of this. So after the funds that we had in place and trying to do this kind of piece by piece with cost savings, we still have remaining $100,000. We have looked into a new construction option. We've looked at prefab buildings. I think one of the options that we were looking at was around $400,000. So we don't quite have that full amount spoken for yet, but we're in a much better place than we were. You know, at this point, we could theoretically, if we could close that gap, essentially place a building on top of the foundation, and it would be ready to function.
Okay, understood. So, I mean, I understand, you know, each district got about a million dollars and a half of funds to, you know, for each park, which was done fairly, and the manager did an outstanding job, you know, with the dispersment of these funds, if you will. So, but this thing came in sky high. It's fair to say, this thing came in two, three times, what we all thought it was 900. I mean, I can't even believe that, for 750 square feet. So that's, that's a big, big problem. So we have, so what's going to be the construction call? What are we looking at to complete this? From the foundation to opening the door, what are we looking at approximately in funds?
Yeah, I think we're going to need at least another $350,000, let's say, to get us from what we have in the bank right now to purchasing, like, a prefab building and have that installed.
Okay.
I think we could make that work with about.
And again, we have about 100K.
Correct. That's what we have remaining of the funds.
All right. So the deficit is about 250K. Okay. All right. So it's safe to say, my Little Leagues in my district aren't going to have a restroom facility for this coming season.
My kids play there, too. So no, we're going to be using the porta potties.
All right. So we are going to have lavatories.
The Parks Department, DPW, it makes sure that they have a contract for fields that are utilized, and they manage the installation of porta potties across the city.
Okay. I'm just sure, I just want to show a laboratory is going to be. That's good. Now, with the foundation, is that usable in some way? Since we have electricity, is it possible to, a temporary canopy, so these leagues can do a temporary concession stand? As a plan B? I'm just trying to think of everything to get some use out of it this year, Giovanni. Is that a possibility?
No. And actually, one of the things that we're going to be spending money on when we finish the foundation is actually putting a fence around it, so nothing happens to the stubs that were installed, and that the foundation doesn't get sort of damaged before we can place a building on top of it.
I imagine the foundation just sitting as a little bit of a liability, too. All right. So it's going to be fenced off and unused. Not what I wanted to hear, Giovanni, but you are great at delivering bad news, let me tell you. Thank you so much. But, Mr. Manager, we do, in closing, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, we have a deficit of about 250K, give or take. So I hope and pray we get this done for next spring. I really do. It's been a long, ongoing project. I know it came well over budget, but I'm confident you'll find the funds, whatever we can do through grants, whatever, find the means to get this operable for the 2026 season. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Voice response G, Scan scan Perkins Eastman, LHS Project delays. Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I think we're all looking forward to seeing this next week. I'm sure something's going to happen at the school committee this week. I think they said they had the building. So I think everyone's going to get a preview of what we'll see next week. And thank you again.
6.2 official report, five years CIP Water Enterprise Fund. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, thank you all very much. The presentation that was put before you is, I want to say thank you very much to our finance team and Stevie DeChains, Mr. DeChains, excuse me, from the Lowell Regional Water Utility and Mr. Fox. Counselors, this is prior, we're trying to prioritize our best practice of capital expenditures over the next five years. We've, with some assistance from contracted engineer services, we've been putting this plan together. There's a good opportunity here that this plan itself overall is $99.8 million over the next five years. Some of those highlights that I know that all of you know is in your pocket, 23.5 million facility upgrade project to the Lowell Regional Water Plant, a million and a half, million and so, 1.5 million, excuse me, in new solar installations at the utility plant, which we found is extremely helpful, has been helpful over the years passed. 10.4 million for utility work to support the needs of the Ruck Bridge. This is vitally important. I know that we've all talked about this individually. We currently have a water line that is going under the Merrimack River, and given the fact that the best way to treat this is with the new Ruck Bridge that is coming, we have all, we're going to be, we're going to have all the hangers in place, et cetera, and have the ability to tie it in, which I think is the right way for our city to be going. Cast iron replacements, that's another $15 million that we're looking at. 26 million for water improvements during the sewer separation work, which is, once again, the EPA consent decree. What we've been looking at is, considering the fact, a sensible is going to be pretty much curb-to-curb ripped up, unfortunately, for some of our friends that live there, it's going to be something that we've really looked in, and Mr. DeChains, thank you very much, to rehab all of our water lines and even our fire hydrants that are in that area. So that's something that we feel as though once we've dug, once we've gone as deep as we're going with SOR, we should be doing water. We will be doing, National Grid will be doing their work as well. There's going to be a lot of, and I hate to say this, turmoil in that area as this is happening over the next few years. So that $26 million for water improvements in the area, $5.5 million, we still have some lead service replacements that are out there, a little bit over $3.7 million for meter replacements, which would help folks, and other critical needs within the department, whether it be vehicle paving, hydrant replacement, and other areas throughout the city. So the finance team has created this model. I believe everybody has seen it. I would like to say that in the earlier years that I had been here, we were very aggressive with the finances that we were spending and we needed to raise. We've tailed that off a little bit, but I think it's because of the difficult votes that the council has taken in the past when it comes to the enterprise account. I'm sure that people have questions in regards to the finances of this. Mr. Baldwin is here to answer any of those questions. But there's also, we are going to be rescinding a portion of the loan order, which is in item 8.1, and that's to the tune of approximately $16.5 million. And for the edification of the listeners out there, what we're doing is we're taking debt off the table, and we're going to be reissuing it in this 99. So we didn't need that $16.5, which I believe started as a $45 million loan order at one time. So we have 16 and a half left, which we will, we're asking the council to rescind. So the strategy that we have overall, I want to say thank you very much to Mr. Baldwin. It is of the highest quality. Our water system consistently, thank you, Mr. DeChains, for all the hard work you've done and continue to do for us over there. We consistently win accolades for it. We're doing, we're moving in the right direction. This is an extremely serious vote, and I'm sure everybody has some pretty serious questions. So the presentation was made to you. Hopefully, it is something that anybody has any questions on. Myself, I'm here, the assistant city manager, as well as assistant city manager of finances here. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you to either the manager, Mr. DeChains. Do we know, we should know, is the usage of water in the city going down? Is it leveled off? Are we using more? Where have we been over the last few years? Through the mayor to Council Getchea. How are you? It's, we used to average, years ago, before we started doing infrastructure and projects, we were averaging about 15 to 17 million gallon average a day. Through improving our infrastructure and replacing mains, we have been able to drop that unaccounted for water down. We average about 12 million gallons a day. In the summertime, it's more usage because of the summer weather, and we generally use 16 to 17 million gallons a day. But what this plan does is help us to improve this aging infrastructure in the city. We have a lot of cast iron. We have that lead service lines that are near. The inspections have been going on right now, and it has to continue for three more years. After the three more years comes up, we have to start replacing these lead service lines between 2027 and 2037. We're hoping we can get some grant money in addition to this. The treatment facility has not been upgraded since right around 2000. We have some serious issues there, but we want to continue to maintain the high-quality water that we provide to these citizens. An important part of it is the infrastructure. It is the hydrants. It's the critical valves that are within the city. Some of these mains are over 100 years old, and we really need to do this in order to provide, it's a health and safety issue. It's fire protection for the residents of the city, and it's very important. In addition, as far as the sewer separation project goes, it's much better to, when that street's open and they're repairing, replacing these mains in there, you already have the street open. You don't want to have to put your sewer lines in there, and then we have a main break, or we have to replace the galvanized steel that's down there. It's already open. So why pay more down the road when we can take care of it while it's already open? already open? We also have a lot of online instrumentation that has become obsolete. We have online tribitometers, and that's how we measure the particles, the suspended solids that are in your water when it comes off the Merrimack River, and we have to reduce that by maximum contaminant levels through DEP. In order to measure that on our supervisory control and data acquisition systems, we have to have the equipment that measures it properly. Now, the equipment we have now are tribitometers. They are obsolete. Hack Company is the one that provides instrumentation for us, and they're not replacing any parts for that. We have a couple of them as spares in case we do need the parts, but we do need to upgrade all this online instrumentation as well, so that we can see. It's a requirement through EP. Everything has to be on digital. Back in the day when I started, everything was hand rut, and they got away from that, so everything has to be digital. Fire hydrants are an important issue. It's much needed. It's been a long time since we've upgraded the treatment facility, and this aging infrastructure really needs to be taken care of before we have a bad incident that happens.
So, I guess my question wasn't really clear.
Okay.
On the accounted-for water, is that going up or down? Not the unaccounted. So, if you said, what did you say the number was, 15 to 17 million a day, now it's down to 12. So, you're saying that the delta was about 3 to 5 million gallons in unaccounted-for water? So, you're getting somewhere around 10 million in actual, we were getting paid for water usage, roughly?
Well, with the infrastructure, yes. We used to...
So, today, are we getting that same number or has it gone down for accounted-for payment money? Because I'm looking at the budget. The other stuff, I'm just...
We average, over the course of a year, 11.5 to 12 million gallons per day, average.
And that's been consistent all the way through?
It's gone up a little bit. At one point, we were around 11, 11 and a half, so it has gone up about a half a million.
I was hoping to hear that answer, because we did a water meter replacement program. We've been aggressively going after large meters and stuff like that, so kudos to your department for that. And that's what I was getting to, is that when CFO Baldwin starts to outline some of the funding sources that are coming in, you're pretty much at the point where you know the number that is coming in because of all these replacement programs. One thing that really concerns me in this is this 16.5 million that's left over. What items in the original loan didn't get done under the 16.5, with that 16.5 million dollars, do you know?
Well, we're rescinding some of it, but we still have a portion of that with projects that are ongoing right now.
That's a large percentage number. That's why I'm wondering, what didn't get done in it?
Part of it, part of it was the South Lowell Storage Tank. That was a, that was a big number. That was about $13 million. As far as the lead service line replacement, that's not going to happen right now until 2027, so we're moving that into this new loan order as well. So, that will reduce, it will rescind the money that we already did have for the original 45 million.
Is the tank no longer needed?
It's not in need.
Okay. The other question is, when you look at the loan order, you're looking at some of the, I think you're switching over some of the operational costs into it by the fire hydrant stuff, which I'm happy to see is happening, but I'm still concerned that we're not checking them regularly. And we should have a yearly program that goes around checking them when the contractor leaves, and that's really a major concern in the city with gates being broken and things like that, as the mayor had, one time, he had filed a motion on, you know, a gate program, and it still hasn't been done. And when you're looking at these fire hydrants, I think this is the proactive way to get ahead, but what is the plan to keep ahead? You know what I mean? When the contractor leaves and everything's fixed, how are we going to keep up with it? That's really the question.
Well, we've had a lot of employee turnover, Councilor. We're kind of at a rebuilding stage right now, because we want to bring the city into the future. It will take some time to get, as you know, Councilor, you've worked in that environment, it takes years in order to get somebody that's up to snuff to be able to do all of this, these different tasks that are required to operate and maintain a well-structured distribution system.
Yeah.
In addition, though, going back to your question prior to that, some monies were rescinded from that original loan order, but monies that were kept there was to provide for citywide hydrant flow testing this year, and also to check on the critical gates that are within the system as well.
Could some of this 16.5 million have been used for the hydrant stuff immediately?
Well, it is going to be. We're going to be doing a hydrant flow testing program, citywide.
In addition, not a hydrant flow test. Flow test doesn't really have much to do with the fire hydrant, to open and enclose it, but I'm talking about the repair to the broken infrastructure of the fire hydrants and stuff like that.
I understand that, Councilor, and again, we've had a lot of turnover of employees. I can't really discuss it in this forum, but we're trying to put our best foot forward and rebuild that distribution division.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Noon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. DeChains is very in-depth in term of, very good response. Thank you, Councilor Kachia, for all this wonderful question. I think the question's around the 99.8 million, is that due to a new and updated capital plan, Mr. Manager? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Manager.
Yep, CFO.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that 99.8 million represents the next five years of capital improvements for the water utility.
So, big chunk of those is really the water department, water infrastructures and stuff like that?
That's correct, Councilor.
So, the, I think it's important, just hearing Councilor Kachia talking about the hydrants and whatnot, this, to do this and do it right now, it certainly helps while we're doing the sewer separations as well and Seneville, that way you don't have to duck it twice, right? You have, you know, foot on the ground already, and this is a way to really get everything done at once. But also important is that the safety and the health being, as Mr. DeChains spoke of, you know, the safety, if you have the hydrant that's not working, you know, a fire happened around the area, or that area, and that's trouble, that's safety issue right there. So, I'm happy that with the, we have now most updated, updated, you know, loan for capital plan, and the recent, I'm more than happy to rescind any money that we not used. This is good for the city, good for the residents, so thank you.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the CFO. Mr. Baldwin, when I look at the financial forecast baseline, it's kind of eye-staggering when I look at 2029 and 2030, but this is something that needs to be done. But if you could clarify or actually educate me, I have a question concerning on the loan order, and there's a certain couple of sentences that I'm just not understanding, maybe you can help me out. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city unless the treasurer, with the approval of the city manager, determines that there should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in section one of chapter 29C. Can you speak to me like I'm a four-year-old, please?
Like everybody else does.
Yeah.
CFO, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gladly. So, what you're referring to is a separate item on the agenda. There's two orders, loan orders, one rescinding that we referenced, the other to authorize the new money, and that's item 8.2. So, the line that references section one of chapter 29C, chapter 29C is the Massachusetts Clean Water Act. It establishes the trust, the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. It's the Clean Water Trust Act, I should say. So, that is a financing arm that the city uses pretty regularly. We're able to submit application to be on the intended use plan and then get low-interest loans through the trust at a rate of 1%, sometimes 2% to help finance, and it's a great program for gateway cities like Lowell to help finance large, expensive, underground utility projects at a rate that's more affordable. We get additional points for being an environmental justice community, et cetera, but it also, the language in the order allows us to finance the, the general obligation is the language we use to pledge the full faith and credit towards most of the debt that we issue. It allows us to tie the revenue from the enterprise fund to pay back the debt. We operate the water utility as an enterprise fund, so the rates that the users pay will support the debt. So, all of this capital that we're talking about will be fully supported by the rate payers.
At a lower interest rate.
Correct.
I get, okay. Thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
Councilor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a different type of a statement here. We're very lucky, we probably don't even realize, that we have different employees and different duties that they perform for the city, and yet, when you think of the water department, it's not a very glamorous, gorgeous occupation, and yet, when we get up in the morning and we turn the faucet on, we get clean water, and we just never realized that someone of the caliber of Steve here has to go out and check the, you don't see what you're seeing on the top. You've got to go down into the ground, and you've got to dig the pipes, and this, that, and the other, not very, very good, but we're lucky to have people that have that education that make this city a better place to live. I don't know what I'd do if I opened the faucet and nothing come out. I mean, gee whiz, but thank you so much for all you do. I know you don't hear it, we complain, this, that, and the other, which rightfully so, and you take it and take it, but I want you to know that deep down inside, we still appreciate it very much. Not an easy job when you look at the pictures and you see how corroded the pipes are. It's not your fault they're in the ground for 80 years or whatever, but you have to have someone in charge that knows what to do, and you're that person, and you're part of the team, and we're very grateful, and I wanted to just...
I'm proud to be a part of this team.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Councilor Robson.
Thank you, and I'd like to say thank you first for this report. I think there's some very encouraging positives that are baked into this report. I'm glad to see, one, there is built-in vehicle replacement plan, because I know a lot of the equipment that water's using on a regular basis, that those aren't little pieces of equipment, and they're very expensive, so I'm glad that's started out and being implemented as part of this. Again, the residual meter replacement program, Councilor Getia touched on it, that allows for efficiencies. That allows us to accurately calculate water usage. It allows us to bring in the revenue that helps us function in that department. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager or to the CFO, I think one thing that might be helpful to explain to the public is, I know you explained it to us, is how we're rescinding the unused portion of that loan, and part of the reason being, if I'm correct, if I'm not wrong, is at the time that we entered in to do the CSO work, consent decree stuff, they kind of changed and shifted what they would allow in order for us to get into compliance, and so, wasn't that a big portion of the unused funds that's going to allow us to go into moving forward and have to take a larger debt?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's an excellent question, and there was a lot of strategy that went into this, and it bears mentioning the teamwork, Mr. DeChain, Mr. Ball, Ms. Oaks, Mr. Machado, we all met several times with Mr. Fox as well, from wastewater to coordinate to come to this plan, and one of the things that was clear to us after the council authorized this past summer, $175 million for the sewer separation work, was that the language of the loan order, the $45 million loan order that was authorized in June of 2019, was not consistent with the work that needed to happen in a post-consent decree environment in Lowell, and so, rescinding the money that was authorized for the water tank and some of the money that was not going to be used was part of the strategy to repurpose, and that, I guess it bears mentioning for the public, when we rescind, that means we're not going to pay the debt service. So, right now, well, two weeks from now, when we have a public hearing, it will authorize the city manager and the treasurer to issue debt. We won't pay the debt service on the debt until after it's been issued, so the act of authorizing the loan order doesn't put us into payback mode, to put it more plainly, but we need to more align the priorities with this post-consent decree environment that we have, and this, the language of the loan order, we've worked with our bond council, it does that. We achieve economies of scale and scope by, you know, not remobilizing. Once the sewer contractors are in there digging up the streets for the pipes, we can get in for the water as well, and there's some savings by the economies of scope there. So, all of those were part of our strategy, and this was months of work to come to this product that's before the council this evening. So, excellent question, Councilor.
Thank you very much, and again, I think this project, especially as was mentioned earlier, where Seneville is kind of going to start a lot of this work with the sewer separation project, it is going to be a little more than annoying to a lot of residents over there, and all we're asking for is patience, but at the same time, as you can see, this is a well-thought-out plan. This is what we have to do as a city with aging infrastructure, and they have many different departments that have put in many hours and strategized what's the best plan of attack, so I'd like to applaud everyone that played a part in this, and thank you for the efficiencies that you found in this. Thank you.
Mr. Blanger? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the report. Mr. Mayor, through you to CFO Baldwin. Mr. Baldwin, one expenditure I'd like to discuss to give a little clarification to the rate payers at home who are watching is, you know, the new Roark Bridge, for instance. You know, it's state money, it seems to be free, but it's not. The city is on the hook for the water line on this, right, to connect on either side, right, which is a rather big expenditure on that project. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, that's another good point that bears mentioning, that regularly with state projects, I guess I'll call them the incidental costs in the community, belong to the municipality. So, for a very large project like the Roark Bridge, the state is funding the design and construction of the bridge, but the cross connection, the utilities, those are on the city, and this is something I've seen in my career here several times with roadway projects, oftentimes any rights of way that need to be acquired, those are on the city. With other bridge projects that we've done, the Tiger Bridge projects, you know, all of the incidental crossings or utilities that need to be attached to the bridges, those belong to the municipality. So, it's something that may not be obvious to the public, but it is a cost that's borne by the city and by the enterprise fund and the rate payers, which is the residents of Lowell, but also the communities that purchase water from the Lowell Regional Water Utility, so they share in that cost as well.
Yes, we do. I was about to mention that. We do have that luxury, if you will, by providing water to the outlying communities, which in turn gives us a little profit, so that's a good advantage we have there. And this not only, that's just one example that I wanted to use, but this encompasses a lot of good for our aging infrastructure. This covers a lot of ground, and we can no longer kick that can down the road. It is time. But, you know, I'm not going to lie, when I started reading this report, I seen $100 million. I'm like, oh, my God. I mean, actually, I said words that aren't fit for public television, but I am, you know, I want to offer the rate payers some relief here. I know $100 million over five years is a lot of money, but listen, you know, to the proposed increases here. Year one, 6%. Year two, 5%. Year three, 3%. Year four, 5%. Year five, 3%. Very, very manageable increases. I wish it was zero, don't get me wrong, but I know, I also know we don't have $100 million in hanging around the enterprise fund at the same time, but very manageable increases for the scope of this work, for the amount of money and what's getting done. So, I'm very pleased with that aspect of this project, what we're going to accomplish for these, again, manageable increases, so I want to commend you on your financial wizardry once again, CFO Baldwin, and I want to give Deputy CFO Austin Ball some accolades as well. Your work is greatly appreciated. I know the rate payers won't have to mortgage their future to pay for this project either, so very pleased. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. You got it. Kozak Getia, wrap it up.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I just want to give kudos to the executive director. The questions in the beginning were pointed at the efficiencies that have happened over the years. When you start looking at the water meter replacement program, and we knocked down what they call unaccounted-for water means lost water. It's water that is either wasted or stolen or some other way, so they brought that down by 5 million, so it doesn't cost the resident more money in treating water that's not being paid for. That was one of the reasons. When you look at this project and you look at the cost, 37% of the cost in this is what the residents actually ask for. When they have a new paved road, they're always asking, why didn't we do the water at the same time? Why didn't we do the sewer at the same time? So, when the sewer project goes by, $26 million of this is going to try to get that incorporated in at the same time, which I think that number's still going to go a lot higher in the end, but it's a good number to start with. When you look at the Roark Bridge, $10 million is going on that piece and to tie in in that area, so right then and there, you're at 37%. And let's not fool anybody in this room or anywhere, $99 million in this water system is a penny in the ocean. It's not even remotely where it's going to need... It's not even remotely where it's going to need to be. And when you're looking at all these roads that are getting replaced in the city, and we're starting to ask the gas company to come in and share in the workload, and they run those heavy equipment over, and we see water mains break, that's because we didn't do our due diligence at the same time. We should be replacing the fire hydrants on those roads at the same time and making sure that's all done. So when I look at this proposal, I say thank you to the water department for stepping up. I think the new skater piece, which measures the chemicals and helps them out, will actually save money again. So thank you again, Mr. Duchaines and your staff, and for your hard work you do. Thank you.
Great. Motion to accept or place on file by Counsel Gitchia, second by Counsel Dakota, also for the CI, opposed motion passes. 6.3 Communication, appoint Courtney McSperrits to the library board of trustees. Motion to adopt by Counsel Mercia, second by Counsel Noonan, clerk. Roll call.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belinda?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to bundle 7.1 to 7.4, please?
Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Noonan, also for the CI, opposed motion passes. Votes to the city manager, 7.1. Vote to accept and expend $117,045 tobacco control grant, FY2526. 7.2 Vote to apply, accept, expend $1 million EOHLC grant. 7.3 Transfer $118,350 to the city manager contingency fund, the DPW. And 7.4 Vote to transfer $250,000 to perpetual care. Motion to adopt by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Yem. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may, on 7.4, I'd just like to say thank you. This motion was before us again a couple of weeks ago, and I'm glad to see that the cemetery commission met. They found a means to finance the long overdue necessary repairs to the garage, the bathroom, and I believe some of the kitchen area for the employees over there, and as well as, I think, touch up some of the roadways that are in need of it in the public cemetery. So thank you very much for that.
Counsel Noonan.
7.3, Mr. Mayor, I want maybe the managers and/or the CFO can explain as to the transfer in this amount. I know, I know what it's for, but maybe the people at home do not know. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to CFO or the managers as to this transfer.
Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. We may jump back and forth on this one. With 311 that has come in, it has absolutely been fabulous with over 1,000, as I stated earlier. We want to give more flexibility as far as the ability to fill in some potholes. I think as of last week, and I should have this number, but we're over 600 right now, and we're inviting everybody, but with that, we need to put more money back into the system. That's coming from the city manager's contingency fund. We figured it was a good ability to spend money over in the DPW area for what had happened over the, over the past, you know, few, really, actually six, the last six to eight weeks with the potholes. Mr. Baldwin, anything to add to that as far as the additional monies going in?
So this, this 311 actually worked well in terms of identifying all those potholes in the city?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. It is fabulous. People are really getting used to it. It's a little quirky. Some people are, you know, not hitting completed, and we're trying to work through that. But I think our staff at 311 is really doing a great job with people calling in, walking folks through it on their phone. I mean, at the end of the day, really, it's, it's going to give us a real ability to target what is, what is happening, what is not happening, how long something's happening to take. And quite frankly, we're getting calls and emails of people saying thank you very much for moving this forward. It's really part of the matrix that we're going to be utilizing in the future to make sure that services are being provided to our residents in a timely manner.
So a portion of this money is also, will do also maybe sidewalk improvements as well?
Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That'd be correct, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel Gitchia.
I'm sorry, that Assistant City Manager Machado lost a job when 311 came out. I don't get to call him as much.
He's not complaining.
I don't know what you're going to put on here.
Mr. Mayor, through to the council, Assistant City Manager Machado was not unhappy about that.
I don't know what you're going to put on your review, but-
You got wastewater jobs, you're up.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager or the CFO, where are we on the snow account? Do we go over, are we under? Because I know sometimes we underfund it and pick it up at the end. Are we in a good place? Because I'm sure we're going to see a transfer soon.
CFO.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So right now, it's still a little bit early while the weather is warming. We still have a lot of open purchase orders with contractors. It is, my experience, it is typical at this time of year that DPW is reaching out to all the contractors and make sure to get your invoices in. And so there's a little bit of lead time at the sort of tail end before we have a true-up of the actual expenses. We, right now, are showing a deficit, but that includes the encumbrances for all the private contractors we use. I expect we'll, we might be a little bit over, but we budget 1.35 for snow. It is, it's typical that we go over. The law requires us to budget at least as much as the last year in order to qualify to deficit spend, and so that's what we did this year. But we will certainly bring a report back with those details in a few weeks when we have those hard numbers.
In your opinion, will it be covered, the deficit piece, out of the DPW accounts? Or is that something that's going to have to come out of manager's contingency? Are you going to carry that debt?
I think, as we sit here this evening, there should be surpluses in other accounts, whether they're in DPW or in other departments. By the end of the year, there will likely be a transfer that can cover the deficit. However, you know, I want to leave myself a little bit of room depending on how much of those encumbrances are real invoices. So more or less, I think we should be able to cover it this year, cover the, what is showing as the deficit today.
Thank you.
Bill's over here, Counsel.
I'm very happy about that, Mr. Mayor, as you know.
April Fool's Storm.
I would just like to echo, as the manager mentioned with 311, and I'm glad to hear the administration's finding it as a useful tool. Someone grabbed me the other day, and they said that 311, they put in a broken lid on the recycling on a Monday. They came home from work on Tuesday with the recycling bin in the yard with a new cover on it. So I mean, and I've heard also potholes. I've heard residents say, I put in a request on the 311, and within two to three days, it was done. I mean, I think it's great, and I'm glad to see that all departments are starting to really ramp up and address it, utilizing this tool. So thank you for that.
What was that? Was it Counsel Scott? No? Counsel Noonan, go ahead.
No, you're saying, Mr. Mayor, after we vote on 7.1 to 7.4, it should come back to 6.3 communication. We skipped that. Did we skip that?
I voted on it.
Oh, we did? Sorry.
You did too. Roll call, Mound Clerk.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belinda?
Yes.
Orders for the city manager, 8.1, 8.2, loan orders, rescind the water loan order, first reading, refer to public hearing on April 15, 2025, and water infrastructure improvement. Motion to refer to public hearing also on April 15, 2025, 7:00 p.m. Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Gitchia, also for the CI, opposed motion passes. Nine, orders to the city manager, 9.1, the orders to amend chapter 104, first reading, skip that, motion to refer to public hearing on April 15, 2025. Motion by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Robinson, also for the CI, opposed motion passes. Section 10, report, subcommittee, 10.1, technology and utilities, March 25, 2025. Chairman, Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Tuesday at 5:30, the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee met in these chambers. Present were all three subcommittee members, myself, Counselors Chow and Scott. We were also joined by counselors Noonan and Mercier. And from the city, we had Maran Fernandez, the city's chief information officer, and Austin Ball, the city's deputy CFO. Also attending was attorney Bill August, who is representing the city in these negotiations with Comcast, Adam McQ, the executive director of Lowell Telecommunications, as well as some members of the public who are here to give input or observe. The discussion centered around the city's franchise agreement, cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Southern New England. Previous version of this agreement expired in 2023, and negotiations have been ongoing since then to get to this renewal. Mr. Fernandez opened the discussion by emphasizing the legal requirement for a public hearing on the renewal. That is what the meeting served to do. Attorney Bill August, who represented the city in negotiations, explained that the proposed 5% franchise fee is based on the gross revenue that Comcast earns from video services within the city of Lowell. And it was clarified that only video services contribute to the revenue received by the city. Any internet or telephony revenues that Comcast sees do not go into this calculation, and that is per the mass general law that discusses the franchise-free agreement. Mr. Fernandez walked us through the overview of the renewal process, emphasizing that this agreement gives Comcast, excuse me, Comcast, a non-exclusive license to operate within Lowell and does not prevent any other providers from entering into the market if they choose to do so. However, infrastructure complaints have historically limited competition from other cable providers. Key terms in this newly negotiated contract include a five-year contract length, public educational and government, or PEG, access provisions, the maximum allowable franchise fee under the law, which is 5% on that gross revenue that Comcast sees within the city being paid to the city, a senior discount, which will be formalized in a side letter rather than in the main agreement, a 50%, sorry, a 50 cent per subscriber fee that is paid to the city. The city will retain complimentary use of the fiber INET or institutional network that links city buildings. The city will, the city of Lowell will remain the only community within the Commonwealth that gets free use of this type of network. Every other community that has an INET from Comcast is paying for basically the amount of data they ship back and forth over it. Lowell remains the only community to receive the INET with no charge for data. They did caution us that that provision would probably go away five years from now when we renew this contract, but we can enjoy it for the five years while we have it, as well as providing high-speed internet access across the city. Adam McQ, once again, executive director of Lowell Telecommunications Corporation, was in attendance, voiced support for the agreement. It was noted that the fees collected through the agreement help fund LTC's work in providing community media services. However, there was concern that the revenue from the franchise agreement continues to decline due to the ongoing trend of cord-cutting, with more residents opting for internet-only services from Comcast and not subscribing to the video portion, which generates the revenue. This shift continues to reduce the overall franchise fee collected by the city and thus being able to be paid to LTC. There are some pending state laws or bills within the state house that may open up other avenues for revenue, but those are still pending. Let's see. Additionally, Comcast reaffirmed its commitment to maintaining a customer-facing presence within the city, specifically through its retail location located at the Target Plaza on Plain Street. The subcommittee acknowledged Comcast a reliable provider with financial stability. It was also clarified that only the city manager has the authority to execute this contract, which cannot be reassigned. So there's no action for the council to take. So that is the report of progress on that meeting. Thank you.
Counsel Blenja, anything on this one? All right, thank you very much. All right. Motion to accept the report of progress by Counsel Belanja, second by Counsel Chow, also for the CI, opposed motion passes. Eleven petitions, 11.1, six property damage, motion to refer to law department for appropriate coordination by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Mercier, also for the CI, opposed motion passes. Announcements, section 12. Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I just want to congratulate greater Lowell Tech High School sophomore wrestler, Antoine Jackman, 106 pounds. He went off to the high school nationals last week. He went 1-1 on Friday, and then on Saturday, he won eight in a row in one day. Massachusetts only allows you to wrestle six, but down there, it was eight in a row, and he came in fourth in the country, out of everybody in the country. So congratulations to Antoine Jackman on an unbelievable feat down at the nationals. Eight wins on a Saturday, crazy.
Well done. Counsel Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this year, April, it's Cambodian New Year's. This year is a year of the snake, so we do it every year, and this year, third annual Cambodian New Year's celebration, which is this Saturday, April 5. It starts at 6:00 p.m. at UTEC. All proceeds from the event will be donated to Southeast Asian Water Festival and the Onkodan troupe. I know that, I've learned that the managers have sponsored a table for, you know, the counselor, all the counselor, and this announcement also acts as an invitation to all the resident at home to join us this Saturday, April 5, at six, from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. We have buffet and dancings and some classical music. Thank you.
Say it, Counsel. Motion, driven by Counsel Chow, oh, sorry, Counsel Yem, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple announcements. I just want to thank the manager and the mayor's office to celebrate this past Thursday,